Are you ready, D2?
Yes.
Ready?
Ready.
I'll go ahead and call the order this regular meeting of the Nelson County Schools Board of Education on Thursday, December 6, 2018 at 2:00 p.m. Before we get started, I'll just make a note that Board Member Jeff Dickerson is at 600 Wilson Parkway here in Bardstown, Kentucky. I think that was part of the published notice for the meeting, but just so you know where he is. Actually engaged in some of the paying work that he has to deal with on a daily basis.
Very engaged.
We appreciate you being able to join us via, is it a Skype session?
Google Hangouts.
Google Hangouts. Okay. So we'll start off with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the Board Mission Statement, the Nelson County Board of Education, representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction through effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management. The District Vision Statement, quality education now, learning for life. Superintendent Bradley, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, no changes. Moving on into Item 3, energize the world in 3A, put people first, student showcase. Ms. Whitlow? Ms. McCoy?
Actually, we're going to take a little bit of a different approach. We have a student here, she's coming from right across the way that we want to recognize today, and we thought that would be a cool way to energize the world this afternoon. So I'm actually going to invite Mr. Rouse up to let us have a little information on this student.
Good afternoon. We're here to celebrate the accomplishments, dedication of Victoria Watson. I want to hear Victoria. Victoria, she has grown a lot since she has been at the Academy. She has taken her classes head-on, did a remarkable job, she's a leader. She is also one of our judges for this evening, which flows. And it's just, I'm just proud and very excited to actually recognize this young lady for all of her accomplishments.
Thank you.
Yep, you don't get to run away yet.
Okay.
It's not that easy. So in your time working at the Academy, what's been one of the things that it has brought to you as a little bit of a different experience that you think has helped you most be successful? And even though the principal is standing behind you, you don't have to say anything about people like you.
Not as many people in the classrooms, not as many distractions, and more one-on-one help, I think, that helped me through my possible years.
Do you see that, that's been one of the things that was a negative possibly, was the, I'll call it the distraction, the noise around you within other schools?
Yeah, and just, I don't know, I think the online classes also helped, so I didn't have to like, I don't know, I get nervous when I present in front of classmates, so I think since I didn't have to do that, it was better for me.
What's some of the online coursework that you've done at the Academy?
I just finished parenting classes, like child development, and health was really easy on there, and I took English and math. I had to struggle with math online.
You did not? You found that was a much better approach versus a classroom approach from the past? What's your next step plan?
I signed up for spring courses for ECPC, so I'll be taking psychology, I think, and English.
So what about post, getting out of school? What is it your goal, I mean, what's your long-term goal that you'd like to do?
I want to do special education.
Wow. Awesome. We've had several students over the past few years coming to the Nelson County Schools that have gone into education and special education, so there may even be some of your friends through the year that'd be good resources you can reach out to. That's awesome to hear.
Hopefully.
Maybe come back here to Nelson County one day?
Maybe. Great job. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, appreciate it.
Also in the crowd is her mom and her grandparents, and I tell you, I can't say this enough about the family support that goes into, this is a whole child approach when families and the school are coming together, so I give you a round of applause for your support and your thoughts. And we're going to go ahead and recognize while we're on this role, a couple other people who have no idea that they're here to be recognized, that's the exciting part. When I came into this role, there was one person that really helped me become acclimated in the health industry as we think about our nursing contract, and that was Liz Magley. So Liz Magley, you come and join me, she has no idea, she thinks very answer questions. Liz, I tell you, she is a wealth of knowledge when it comes to nursing and how to provide healthcare access to students, and she's been a right hand to me. Your work is phenomenal, she's detail-oriented, and she loves kids, and she loves servicing them. She sees mine at the ELC, she's been there for them, she knows how to handle a bloody nose, vomit from a little, what, I'm going to tell you.
My nose thermometer.
She has annoying hands coming out to do this work, and Liz, I just want to show my appreciation to you, I'm so thankful for you.
I appreciate it.
She's also a parent.
She's an Ironman competitor, Iron Woman competitor, winner of the corporate-sponsored bourbon chase, I mean, this woman, she rocked the house. Another person who has no idea why she's here, she thinks she's here for a one-on-one with me, is Katie Thompson from Communicare. Katie, you come and join me. So without our support from our community partners in the world of mental health, we could not do the work we do, and I have been in meetings with Katie, I've seen her work with students on a one-on-one, and she never ceases to amaze me in what she can change, how she changes the lives of students every day. Katie, we as a district are so excited that you partner with us, your collateral services are excellent, that's truly what we want to embody when we think about whole child. I appreciate you, and I want to show that, so. Congratulations. And I know she has to run out because she has a client meeting in a few minutes, so we appreciate her taking her time today to join us. All right, and then we're going to jump right to the putting people first, ignite session.
Okay, so moving into 3B, put people first quarterly ignite, and I believe that's what it says before. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie, thank you, Liz, thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
Hey, proud mom moments, you got to take it back.
I know, I know. I'm excited they can be here for her and show their support for her today. It's exciting. All right, so what you're going to see here today is we talk about community health engagement and the refining process as we identify priorities. This is a new role for our district as we think about the Director of Community Health Engagement, and so we're finding the process of what all is entailed in this position and what are the priorities. So what I've done over the last few weeks is really identify what are the priorities. So you heard me talk a lot last time about interconnected systems, and so putting that into language around our, at Nelson County, kind of connecting those to the cultural priorities for our district. So at Nelson County Pride, I want to share these with you. What we're going to work through over the next year to years to come is really clearly defining a culture of care that inspires our kids, our staff members, to care for themselves, others, and the community. So when I talk about each one of those, I'm really talking about staff and students, because it just is too bold, we have to care for all of them. Also, the next one, wait, not the next slide, hold on. The next priority is inspiring and learning, which is we're developing a shared vision of community-centered learning experience to excavate gifts. So when we talk about learning how to love each other and love ourselves and love our community, it doesn't just happen in a silo, you're meeting with your counselor, you're meeting with, you know, an assistant principal or anything, it happens in the classroom if you think about empathy-based instruction, and so that's the work that will happen there to really pull out gifts for our students. That's in combination with Chase's work with student leadership and Laura's work with workforce development. None of it happens, none of the magic that can happen with a student, especially if you talk about this next one with purpose and passion, can really happen without the three not connecting. So then in shared leadership, and this is what I'm going to focus on today, is a gift and caretaking systems. So we're in the process of really building and refining our caretaking systems to care for all and cultivate purpose and passion. That's really what we want our students to be able to leave from us with this purpose and passion to serve our community and serve in their workforces, or in their workplaces. So, all right, so I'm going to focus on shared leadership. And so we've identified some of the caretaking systems that exist right now, we've really honed in to six of them. Nutrition, which you'll hear from today, school safety that you've heard me talk a little bit about, and I'll do an update today to show you kind of what direction we're headed in. Physical health and wellness, so today I'm going to also give you an update on the nursing that's going on in our district. Social emotional health, which is really my passion, is working with our counselor, so you'll eventually hear an update on where we are on that. Early learning and literacy, so I've come to, I knew and then really have come to learn how early learning and literacy is so impacted by caretaking, those social emotional skills that you get and the love that you learn. For, you always move, the year of the fowl is a huge year, or a huge span of years, but really when I got to see those kids over my few months that I've been working at the ELC to coach and to be with Ms. Walker, is those little brains are just, they soak up everything, anything, that's our prime time for caretaking for sure, as we kind of lay the foundation for that in them. And then the non-educational learning pathways. So what happens when our kids have experienced trauma in their lives, and how can we best serve them through caretaking, but also how do we offer them flexible learning options to meet their needs? For example, a teenager that maybe gets pregnant, how can we offer them opportunities that allow them to flourish past their time with us? And so I'm going to focus really on three today, just giving you an update on school safety, physical health and wellness, and then Jessica Hoag is going to join us to share with you her priorities for nutrition. I will say, nutrition is something I also love to talk about, Jessica and I could always need to talk forever. Diane, I think you have a love of passion for this too, is how our brains and our bodies are impacted by the foods we eat, and how caretaking really goes forth in nutrition as well as anything else. So it's a passion of mine as well. So, Carla? All right, so, school safety priorities, you've heard us talk a little bit about this in the last one, and we've really defined where are we really putting our work in, and so we've come up with really three priorities that again tie back to the district priorities. So the first one, in Nelson County Pride, we're clearly defining safety protocols. That involves visitor management, field trips, supervision. We need to create standards for what it looks like to have safe protocols for all of those scenarios. Also, inspired leaders and learners, so we're developing caretaking experiences that establish student connectedness. I think one of the things that you all know is violence prevention is very difficult to talk about, and what kind of stems, what is exactly the cure for violence prevention? There is nothing really there, but we do know that a pure form of violence prevention is student connectedness. We know that that's what works in schools, and so we are on just a trajectory of making sure every student is connected in our buildings. So BJ is really heading up that work and leading within the caretaking structures. And then shared leadership, our partners with first responders, as is our partners with our mental health care, our physical health care services, our nonprofits in our community are so critical to our success. That's why often you hear me refer to whole school, whole community, whole child, because it really does take all of us, people say it takes a village, it really does take a whole community to come in and caretake for kids. And so I'm going to give you an update of where we are on that, besides the priorities, the update and the tool we really, really want to utilize, thank you Carla, to make this come to life. And so we have begun working on a school safety strategic plan. So the goal is to share a school safety strategic plan focusing on three priority areas that you just heard, safety protocols, student connectedness, and first responder partnerships by August 2019. By, so this is where the action step was and are are action steps. So by, in September, BJ McCoy began working on facilitating quarterly community safety forums with our emergency management services. So that means our chair, our, the captain, I'm sorry, Mr. McCoy, I may be using wild law enforcement terms, captain of our PD, our EMS director, our fire department director, all of them come to the table, as well as the new SRO at Bardstown, to come together and think, how do we serve schools and ensure their safety? So he began those in September. In December, right now, he is working on selecting members of our school safety strategic planning team to make this come to life. In February, he will be facilitating quarterly student safety teams, or beginning that, because we need to hear from our students, we need to know, where are you feeling unsafe in our schools? Are you feeling unsafe? What are the issues? And then by May, he will develop with that team, identifying the priorities for the three identified priority areas. So where are we going to set standards? How are we going to set goals? Where do we want to be in the next five years, that it related to the budget, as well as maybe manpower, all within that school safety strategic plan? And then by June, he plans to present to you all that plan for First Read with planned implementation beginning in August 2019. So his strategic plan may say we're not doing something until 2020, but the plan will be produced, presented to you all for your overview. So, yeah, there we are. So next, we'll move on to physical health and wellness, and this is really focusing on one caveat of physical health and wellness, and that's in our nursing contract with Cumberland Medical Center, our family medical center. And so one thing that our nurses really wanted to do is, I've met with Liz and saw, I really wanted to know, where were your thoughts when you began increasing services? I think I knew, but I didn't want to guess, and so Liz has directed me, is really, it seems like you wanted to increase healthcare access to students and staff. When I think about underserved kids and their access to healthcare, our school nurses and our partnership with Cumberland allows us to get the underserved honestly, as well as the served in more convenient ways. Then inspired leading and learning, really shared wellness data management systems. I have come to learn through Liz and through our school nurses that if we think as educators that we are cycles and paperwork and everything that goes onto that, we have not entered the medical field. It is huge in documentation, but it's so critical to how we serve their needs, because if we don't have it, there may be massive, there may be major mistakes, and so their wellness data management system is huge. And so that's really to ensure quality healthcare. And then, we're fostering our partnership between Nelson County Schools and Cumberland Family Medical, and I wanted to give you an update of where we are on that, so Carla, look over the next one. So all the priorities again fit into the district priorities. So we know that Nelson County Schools are being served by nine school nurses currently, we have hired a school nurse within this time period from the beginning of the year. We know that this is our first contracted year with Cumberland Family Medical. They have provided all of our supplies to our school nurses, we buy very little in forms of supplies for them, and they provide us the nurse practitioner and provider nurse that allows them to see sick visits, child in the schools, as well as well child visits. So kids who are underserved because they can't deal with transportation to the pediatrician's office, the nurse practitioner can do that in our school, and we're working to make that a reality for any and all of our kids. Also, 30% of our nurses' salaries is being brought back to the district through our partnership with them, so that was in the contract. They are wanting to increase that each year, will be negotiated at the end of each year, but their hope is to provide us more of their salaries each year, which bodes well for us in being able to have these, the capacity to serve our students. And then in the last one, this was, this is pretty crazy to me, is school nurses are currently serving the average of about 15 students per day, but over the last three months, the nurse practitioner alone and their provider nurse is always with her, has seen 547 students just for sick visits alone. So when you think about that number of students seeing them and the possible effect it has on attendance for not leaving our schools to go and be seen, that we're able to address that, they can write prescriptions right there on the spot, so a parent is not having to be transported to different areas to serve their child. And then they've also done 234 well child visits this school year. So, and then on top of that, we also administered 720 flu vaccines. So they're doing some really great work, and really it's about removing those barriers to healthcare for kids, and we're doing that right there in the school buildings. So I'm very thankful for our partnership with Cumberland Family Medical and for Liz's leadership with our school nurses, so. And then the last one that I really want to focus on is with Jessica Hoag, and she's going to tell you about her priorities with nutrition under our caretaking system. So Jessica, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, you're live, girl. Now you're good, you're good.
Okay, I feel like I'm, but I'm going to kind of split screens. So yes, I'm Jessica Hoag, only Jessica, because I just got married, and I am the food service director. So I was really excited when Robin kind of talked with me about this and gave me the opportunity to present to the board, what are our priorities when it comes to nutrition? And I do apologize, I'm not there in person, I'm at a Pega conference in Bowling Green, Kentucky, so we're learning about foods for next year. And, but if you'll look on Slide 7, go ahead and, just like all the other things that Robyn's already talked about, the nutrition priorities kind of fall within the district priorities. So we do have a Nelson County Pride, and that kind of goes into what I like to call impossible service. So we're going to provide impossible service to our schools and our community, and that is with the whole service department. With inspired leaders and learners, we will develop healthy food experiences that engage students and families. And shared leadership, we will invite people from across Nelson County to the table to create community-centered cafeterias, or community-centered cafes. And we're going to go through each of those priorities. So with impossible service, our goal is to create a care culture among our cafe caretakers. With that, my action steps include creating a care book for all of my food service employees for 2019, 2020, and host a caretaking camp in August 2019 to kind of get the school year started. And then I want to continue to build that cafe care, because it's something that we need to continue to work on, and we're going to do that through those designated backpack days in 2019, 2020 calendar. Go on down to the healthy food experiences. With this, I want to reimagine the possibilities, the possibilities are endless, with positive food-related experiences for students, staff, and community members. The biggest thing though, you know, with school nutrition, we are here for the students, but we want to include our staff members, our parents of our students, and of course our community members. One thing that we want to start and kind of build upon is planning out seasonal menus so that we can create opportunities for students to try different fruits and vegetables throughout the whole year. We also want to create a recipe catalog for menu options that allows cafes to use more fresh ingredients, and we've actually already started that process a little bit, just kind of creating recipes. I think school nutrition sometimes gets bad reputation as far as like the processing and stuff, but you're still able to kind of cook from scratch in some ways. And then the last thing is, we kind of want to bring back that junior chef experience. So that is something that we did in, Nelson County did in the past, but they haven't currently been keeping up with it, and that is, that would be a great experience for our students to be able to learn culinary skills and then go and compete at the state level. That is the hope with that, just to kind of create that experience for all students to take part of. And then our last priority, the community-centered cafes. With that, our goal is to offer healthier, fresh, and local food options through the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program. And this first action step, the way this works is, the federal government each year gives us so much money, and they say, you can send this here, or here, or here. So we kind of, as the food service director's job is to kind of allocate where these funds are going to go and what foods we're going to put those funds into. So we don't actually ever see the funds, but one thing that we will do that has, you know, not been done probably the best in the past, is that we're going to allow, allocate additional funds to the USDA Department of Defense, which is DOB, the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, that we just call it DOB in the food service director world, but that allows us to allow, allocate, sorry, so much money to that program, and then our schools can use that to buy fresh fruits and vegetables from Robies. And so then we can kind of plan the menu to involve or include more of those products. We also want to pursue a farm-to-school grant program during 2019, 2020, that will help us improve access to local foods in schools, and kind of provide the training and technical assistance to improve access to the local foods. And then I want to begin researching the implementation of a student-operated school garden for 2019, 2020. And with this, we can start out something as small as, you know, an herb garden, and then we can build upon it, and the hope is, in the future, use the crops that are grown in that student garden on our menu. So those are the starting priorities for the food service department, and if I, do I have time to show them something I've been working on?
Sure, sure.
And this, so, this is something that I have worked on since just about, probably about when I first started, in July, but it's finally coming all together, and I'm going to share my screen. So this is what our menu is going to look like starting in January. So there will be a link on our website page, and you'll go in, and we can just do Nelson County High School. And then you can select the menu, whether it be breakfast or lunch. This is really going to help people be kind of more aware of choices as well, against uncertainty in January. So this is what will, people will see when they come to view our menu. And what's so great about this is it's got our menu set out for the month, and you can go down and parents, nurses, students can look and hover over each item, and that will give you the nutrition facts layout for everything. Gets you ingredients down below too. If we have diabetic students, which I know we do, we need to be very accurate on those carbohydrate counts, so what's so great about this is if they want to, if they need to go to the school nurse, and the school nurse is like, how many, you know, what all did you eat? We can accurately count up the carbohydrates. So let's say this student ate a pepperoni pizza slice with California veggies, some mandarin oranges, and a strawberry milk, and I wanted some ranch with my pizza. So down here below, it calculates everything you just clicked on, so it'll give you an accurate count of those carbohydrates. And the last thing that I really like about this is kids with allergies, say we've got a kid that is allergic to milk. Once you click that, it will take off everything that contains milk, so that the kid and the parent knows, okay, today you have parent knows, okay, today you have to, you know, there's something that you can't eat, or, and it also helps my staff and myself know, okay, on these days, this kid has to be offered an additional option that does not contain milk. So I think it will help parents feel more at ease sending their kids, and hopefully bring some of those kids back into our lunch rooms and eating with us.
Absolutely, Jessica. Thanks about being mindful about the things we put in our body, and that's an excellent tool to use for parents, staff, students alone. What an excellent tool. Thank you for your leadership in that, it's awesome.
And, and you said that gets launched in January after we come back from Christmas break?
Yes.
That is unbelievable.
Did you design that app yourself, Jessica?
Sorry, what?
Did you design that computer program?
Oh, no.
Well, Ms. Jessica, you just, you just made me so happy because you've got more school luncher back. I've been having to pack lunch every night, and this right here gets me out of the lunch business. It gets me back into the school lunch business. My daughter may not be so happy, but mama sure is. I'm not going to pack lunches anymore after January.
That's awesome. All right, thank you, Jessica.
I'm Chef Arnaud. Jessica made the, get kids involved with cooking, can you chef them?
Absolutely.
So just to kind of wrap it all up, I hope you were able to see a little bit from this Ignite session, kind of the systems that are being pulled together. So the first visual I showed you the last time I was here were these hearts that are kind of everywhere, and we know they're interconnected systems, but as we slowly start to refine the process, there's no more of these siloed processes, they're really coming into the shared leadership of caretaking system. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Quick question. So back on the slide that was talking about the school nurses and the number of touch points that they've had, are we also seeing any touch points with staff?
So Liz, you may have a, I don't think we ran that number of how many staff are seeing, but I know.
Yeah, I don't know that specifically as, but those are just student encounters, but I can tell you even on a personal level that the staff are utilizing the health insurance money. Has been a very useful tool for them, cutting down that.
It's, it's the ease of access. They no longer have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. They no longer have to have to book an appointment, they just go down and say, can I, can I see the nurse practitioner today? And they can. So I know that BJ McCoy had a strep throat, and he was like, I'm going to die, and so he needs to see the nurse, nurse practitioner, and say, booking appointment with that nurse practitioner. So staff members.
It wasn't quite that bad.
It's the ease of access. liability was $8.2, the next year it was $10.7, the next year it was $11.9, and this year it's $14.4. So you're going to see that trend information going forward. Now, the TRS below that, the pension liability shows a zero, that's because the state has determined it's a special funding situation, so they're basically saying they're on the hook for that, and that's not really being pushed down to the district. Page 61, is going to be the same type of information, of course, this is the first year, so you have the one here presented, but that's the OPEB liability related to the TRS. You see there that it's $11.7 million. Page 65, OPEB for the SERs plan, you'll see there that's total of $4.9 million. And these will go out to 10 years as the years go, and this will be disclosed, require Finally, on page 76, since you are considered a governmental entity, we issue a report on internal controls, refund for recording, and over your federal warrants. And you'll see there, it's a good summary on page 76, that there were no material weaknesses or significant efficiencies that we identified over internal controls, and there was no non-compliance that we identified over your federal warrants, unmodified, clean findings for those reports. Any questions?
No, but I'm sure they can find a way to take more money from us.
Say the rates are trending up.
Yeah.
So then, we would need, I believe, a motion to approve, is that correct?
I think this is just a, I think this is just a report. Supposed to be an unbiased report to you on the, on the, just.
I did see a motion there, I did want to say that Mr. Dickerson had said, since he didn't have any firm, if we needed to do a motion, he would abstain from it, but this is just a formative then, so.
Appreciate it, Mr. Strange, thank you. Something that, which isn't part of this, but maybe in the future, Mr. Early, I know over the years, we've done several of these performance bonds for energy efficiency, and maybe we could just kind of get an update at some point on that. I think we might possibly do those in the summer, but I don't know that I remember one this past summer, I just hate to remember.
We've been meeting with Josh Bunch, and part of the, part of the reason we not brought him in yet is because we're waiting on the state report, which he feels like should be coming out any day. As you, as you, well, if you may or may not know, the state essentially cut some funding to the, to energy, even resources, and what was the name of the exact name?
I don't remember the exact name, it had something to do with who tracks our energy improvements and how we are doing according to the state on our energy.
The majority of that money was cut, so they're a little slower this year. Our reality is, we have a lot to settle already in terms of energy management, but we were waiting for him to come out with those state report. Last year, I believe we were second in the state in terms of energy efficiency after, so what we can tell you is that, based on the initial reports from Josh, Bloomfield, where there was the most changes made, is now most efficient school. In fact, would be one of the top schools in the state in terms of energy efficiency. He couldn't say, he couldn't say it was one yet, but waiting on the report. So the chances are, based on what we expect, we would be likely the number one most energy efficient district in the state, which is largely due to the investments made over the past 15 years by the board.
Well, and while that, that also will be part of the overall picture, even more specifically, and what made me think of this was looking in here and seeing the recordings on our bond commitments that we got, made me make the connection, thinking about performance bonds, which are two separate, different pots of money, but trying to take a look at that return on the paydown on those performance bonds. And then again, it's not something necessary for tonight, because it's not part of the agenda, but just something that at some point down the road, we can see how that progress is going.
We can go into the next work session, too.
Sure. Have a good. Thank you.
And I'd like to come back to the, to the financial statement report here a little bit in the next work session.
Okay, sounds good. Moving into 6B, surplus vehicles sale, Mr. Markacy?
We, with the retirement of Philip Mattingly, we decided that we no longer needed the truck that he drove, we decided to surplus that vehicle. It was donated to us by BCD some years ago, it's a 2005 Dodge with 275,000 miles on it. We put it up for sealed bids, we only got one bid, and that was from Philip Mattingly himself. I personally wish we could have given the vehicle to Philip, it's about a $500 vehicle, and Philip bid $500 for it. Low fair trade-in, it's $1,006.5, it's not a fair vehicle, it's a, it's about a $500 truck. So I'm asking that you accept that bid of $500 for that vehicle.
Motion to approve.
So I hear a motion by Ms. Barry, and would that be?
All approved.
Ms. Dye makes a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I also see an aye from Mr. Dickerson there as well, any opposed? Okay, so motion passes.
Just a, part of the reason it wasn't there, had many dents, bangs, and bruises.
Well, and also saw the notation of check engine light, which can't be anything.
Right, and we decided not to put money on it.
It could be a $10 fix, or it could be a $1,000 fix.
We're getting our money's worth.
There we go.
$500.
In fact, even more than scrap, it looks like.
Yeah, perhaps about 140 a ton, so it's about a $200 scrap.
There you go. Moving into 6C, new bus purchases?
Since we made $500 on the sale of the trucks, I'm asking that you approve the purchase of six new international school buses, 72-passenger school buses, for about $542,000. Someone tells me the money's there, and that will allow us to surplus some 2001, 2002 models that we have, and take 2004 models off the road and make those into spare buses.
And the International Crime Bureau, like, that's what you had recommended we move to back several years ago.
We've had those, we had one year where we boxed some Thomas Freightliner buses, five of those, and just the way our fleet is structured, and parts are interchangeable, and seat covers, and switches, and motors, and things like that, so I feel like it's in our best interest to pick up the International brand.
So then, we would need a motion to approve the purchase of six of the 2019 international 72-passenger buses.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Dye, all in favors?
Aye.
We got Mr. Dickerson as well, any opposed? Motion passes. Appreciate it, Mr. Dickerson.
Just a little side note, we didn't buy last year, so this is, yes.
Right. We still have some catching up to do.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Markacy. 6D, district reciprocal contracts, Ms. Sikulski.
Good afternoon. Every year, we have students that are out of the district plot, who will be a part of the Nesta County School District. With that, in order to receive state transportation and attendance funding, we have to enter reciprocal agreements with several different counties that we have listed up on the screen. So it is recommended that we are able to go into these agreements with those counties so that we can receive funding for those students that come to us, as well as our students that come to them, they will receive that funding as well.
And so I see 16 districts that were listed up there, obviously Bartstown and Pensil is because we have an ongoing reciprocal agreement with them that's already enacted.
Yes.
These are relatively stable from last year, it's under discussion.
Yes, I've gone through the ones we've received so far, and they're all the same.
And I mean, this could be anything from district staff that live in another county, and they want their child to come to our district, or it could be in reverse, or it could just be that a family in another county has said, or another district has said, we want our child to be in the Nesta County.
And several that live along, like, Larue County lines, proximity is a little bit closer versus the district.
The home district.
Yes.
So we would need a motion then to approve the reciprocal agreements for the districts that are listed?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry.
Second.
Second.
Be glad to see you.
There we go, is that okay, Ms. Dickerson?
Absolutely.
So a second by Mr. Dickerson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Sikulski, on that. 6E, snow makeup days, which we did have just one, but as of yesterday, now we got a second.
We missed November 15th of 2018 for a snow day, so I'm recommending that we use February 15th, which is on the current school calendar, as the first makeup day to be used for that one. And then we did this yesterday, December 5th of 2018, and we are recommending that February 18th, 2019, which is the second makeup day listed on the current school calendar as well, to be the makeup dates for those two days.
What things were these to be used for?
One was a professional development day.
Professional and makeup day.
Well, one was president's day.
Yeah, the 18th was president's day.
Yeah, there's a little, makeup days.
They're not back my days, right?
These are days, originally they were listed as makeup days for?
For professional development.
These are, generally, these are not working days.
Okay.
And so it's like it was a Friday and a Monday. So then, we would need a motion to approve February 15th and February 18th of 2019 as the makeup days for November 15th and December 5th, respectively.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Dye.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Breeding, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five votes aye, opposed, motion passes, thank you, Ms. Sikulski. Moving into 6F, the 2019 board meeting schedule, Superintendent?
So we've had, we heard this is a great example of where a working session would be, and this would be a great conversation, a working session, we didn't have a working session in December, so we've had some conversation over the past four, six, eight weeks around board meeting schedules, excuse me, and I can tell you that after talking to you guys and hearing you talk amongst yourselves, there is, there's not a pure consensus on this. With that said, the options that we initially proposed, we'll just run through those options so you're aware of them, and I will explain the recommendation, not only knowing that the recommendation was really based on no consensus, meaning, it's, I think we're going to have to have some discussion here, Chase might have to set the timer again. So I do think that this warrants some discussion, there's five, there are five board members, and there are pros and cons every kind of timeframe and option. And I think it's important that everyone has an opportunity to share where they are with that discussion, and of course, Jim in the audience also has an opinion about it. So with that said, the first option was the Option A, looking at 12 decision-making sessions and 11 work sessions. Option B, which is the 12 decision sessions and six work sessions. And Option C, which was 12 decision sessions and four work sessions. And Option D, 12 decision sessions and two work sessions. And Option E, 12 decision sessions and no work sessions. Based on my conversations, we rank somewhere in between the 11 work sessions and six work sessions. In terms of our conversation, I can, I can say that as a superintendent for the past seven months, I see the value, I certainly see the value in all of these options, and I think it's important that, as a team, you are able to share kind of your preferences and come to some conclusions around where we want to go. And I think, talking to Diane briefly, and one of the conversations, you know, if we get into a situation where we make a decision around work sessions and we need to alter that, to have a special call meeting if that comes, in case that's what we have to do. As we know, we don't want to change the schedule for the board meeting, we recognize that we're becoming more thoughtful on how we collaborate and communicate with our, with each other and the community, and I think there's really, you know, there's lots of benefits and opportunities anyway to go. So with that said, turn it over to you.
Show the options again.
Is it easier to delete or cancel, or then to, than to add a session if we deem it necessary?
So if you add a meeting, it has to be declared a special call meeting, which means whatever is listed on the agenda whenever that meeting is called is the only, are the only things that can be discussed, versus in reverse, having a meeting and then canceling it, or having a meeting scheduled and then canceling it is just canceling a meeting. Did that answer your question, Mr. Dickerson?
It did, yeah, thank you.
And I wasn't clear on the intro, there are two decisions remaining, both of which will likely change from last year, that is, the number of working sessions and start time. One thing that has, we have had consensus on, is that 5 o'clock is too early for the majority of our board. So the other options were 5:30 or 6:00, and those, that's, there are two, they're part of the same decision, but there are two talking points.
The, so I'll go back, talking about the number of work sessions, of course, Option A, which has 11 of them, July is the only month that does not have a work session, simply because, you know, we've always got that July 4th holiday right there, smack dab at the beginning. I mean, I think, you know, I've shared my opinion last year on this, I always think it's better if we've got the meetings available, if we need them, they're there, we can cancel if need be, which that does happen every now and then. We will have some months that are obviously lighter, I'll use the phrase workloads, it's not really the right wording, but lighter workloads, but not only trying to prevent having special, having more special call meetings than we would have to, hopefully we would not have to have any, typically other than tax area, but also it allows for consistency. If we know that it's First Thursday, Third Tuesday, with a couple of exceptions, because we got a couple of holiday or spring or fall break scenarios that we always address every year with sliding the date usually of the meetings. But if, in my opinion, if we have something that is much more consistent to where we know there's always going to be a work session on the First Thursday, regular on the Third Tuesday, not only does it make it easier for us, easier for staff, but I think it also makes it easier for the public, that they're not wondering, so is this a month that there is a special call, is this a month there is a work session, is this month it's the Third Tuesday? I think consistency is something that we can always make sure to lean upon.
But don't we post those dates on the district calendar?
We do, but also, even though they're on the district calendar, district website, published in the local media, I think we still get questions of, so when's the meeting this month? And with that being said, if we can make it to where it's just publicized consistently, always a work session First Thursday, always a board meeting Third Tuesday, versus having one month we may or we may not have a meeting, I mean, we may, not everybody does go to that district calendar, I guess is one way to put it.
I'm going to beg you differ here on some things. Number one, in the two years I've been doing this, I've never known a meeting to be canceled. I've never known a work session to be canceled. I've known you come and been coming here and have a 30-minute work session and talk about the exact same thing that we're going to talk about in a meeting, so that's why I'm a direct advocate, I'll just give right now, Option B is the one I'm an advocate for, because that's six. That is not the 11, that's the six. I think six is a fair number, and that doesn't go too long. I just don't want to go too long without seeing you all face-to-face, without having that face meeting, without giving Mr. Brooks the face time, anybody that wants it, everybody. So I don't want to go too long without that many, but I like the six versus the, I just think that the 11 is too many. Now, if something, you know, God forbid, something happens and we have some issue, something comes up, we may have to have work sessions, we, there was a time where we had nothing to do in one week, it happens, those are special call meetings, we can have them. So I like that. As to people knowing and a sense of board meetings are on the First Tuesday and the Fourth Thursday, I don't know, I can only speak for myself, and that is, I still get confused on when they are, because I'm looking at that calendar right now, thinking, well, I scheduled something for January 15th, thinking there's no way there was a board meeting that day. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't know that that, the certain Tuesday, Thursday of the month thing really matters. I don't think that that's a point for us to set our schedules on, is my opinion on that.
Well?
And I know, everybody's different.
That's right. To me, the responsibility of us is to be informed and kept informed, and I'll say, I told Commissioner of Education, I want, I don't want to see what we're doing in the paper or hear it from another person out there. I want to know exactly what we're doing all the time, because I think that's our job. Now, I don't care if we have them in the summer, per se, because the summer's dead anyway, just about, until August, until everything starts roaring up and stuff. But I have no problem even limiting to 10, but I don't want to go any lo, I want to know for transparency and others. I don't care if this meeting, because I like to ask questions, so I don't care if this meeting only lasts 20 minutes, 25 minutes, our working session, and I know we say the same thing, or I've thought the same thing in our meetings, our revenue meetings, but in our work session, that's what we're supposed to do, is ask lots of questions and know before we hit that door, is this what we want, or is this what we're thinking?
But a lot of what we're doing, we're doing these, we're making decisions on things that are on an annual basis, and we're hearing them year after year after, which is fine, you know, and so I think that, I think that Superintendent Bradley and his team have streamlined and are continuing to streamline and make our meetings purposeful, and make our meetings valuable, and to have, you know, to where we don't need to do that twice a month, every month. We don't need to do that.
I mean, that's okay, if that's why, you know, I just don't.
Do I think that we need to have work sessions? Yes, because I think that there is some material that we need to be presented, that we have to have time to drip on, you know, before we make a decision, you know? And so I think that that's reasonable. I just don't think it needs to be every month, because then you're hearing one thing, and then you're hearing it again, and to me, that just wastes time. It does, it wastes time.
Where?
Because you're doing, you're just making, you know, the reciprocity agreements. There was no reason to hear that at a work session and then turn around two weeks later or three weeks later and hear it at a regular session. It's just not necessary.
Well, and that's, and that's a perfect example of the items that there isn't necessarily the need for discussion on, or need for follow-up on, I mean, Ms. Sikulski brought to us tonight the 15, give or take, school districts that we'll be looking at reciprocity agreements, there isn't the, well, can you go back and follow up on this or that about reciprocity? The ones that I'm more concerned are is whenever it may be, whether it's policies, whether it's calendar, whether it's financial, whether it's discussions about draft budgets.
So then, that's where I think Superintendent Bradley and his team are very talented, to where they can structure the work sessions to include that and get everything in that we need to get in, in a year.
And I think we're saying, and I think we're saying the same thing there, those there being items that we definitely have to have discussions during work sessions, because we may have questions that we need more clarity on, or we may have recommendations about wording of a particular policy that has to come up outside the normal summertime policy work. But again, I mean, I'll go back to, if we have, I mean, I follow what you're saying, Ms. Dye, I mean, we do rarely cancel them, but that doesn't mean that we can't become more prudent about doing that even. I'm just, I'm always err on the cautious side personally, in that if we've got it available already, if it's already known that it can be there and used, and has the flexibility to be used, we've got it, versus if we don't have something and all of a sudden we do need one, we are very structured and limited on what it is that we can talk about during those meetings. And maybe that's something that we, as a board, like what you were bringing up, Ms. Dye, about, you know, if we have meetings, even if it is a 20 or 15 or 30-minute meeting, is it at a work session that we do need to be spending time on that one? Or is it, could we even slide that item to another work session a month later and just have a regular meeting that month? Again, I think we have those things that we can think about, but I'm just very cautious, and you used the word transparency too, I'm very cautious that we want to make sure that we have the opportunities in the public to be asking questions about particular items that come up. I agree, talented group of folks here, probably one of the most talent I think any of us have worked with in quite some time. And when I do this, I'm not only talking about Mr. Bradley, I'm talking about those that are sitting here with us today as well. And we've got to be conscious of the time that these folks will also be spending with us, which is why we can't always us, which is why we can always cancel. I mean, just because we have it scheduled does not mean that we have to be here.
But it means, but what it means is they're, because they are, because they, like, you're all not here. Because we do have what I consider to be the best team in the state, we have top-notch professionals who are going to prepare for a work session like they are a board meeting. So what we've essentially done to them is taken their prep time, we, they've got to get it ready faster, they have to have it ready then, and then they're going to come to our work session, and you know it's going to be 15 minutes before the work session that they're down out of time. If they're in the work session, even if it's 30 minutes, essentially there's an hour out of their workday. If we have six work sessions that we don't need during the course of the year, six versus 12, we've taken six hours of their workday a year, essentially taking one day of work a year away from this group of genius educators. Essentially what we've done is we've given, we've stolen a day from our children.
Well, but that is if we have it when we really didn't need it.
We have.
I just stand for transparency. This is our job.
Transparency, this is our job, and we have, you know...
This is our job, but I want every, anybody that's got, I want anybody and everybody that is allowed to get online, to do whatever Mr. Brooks has magic and stuff, because we owe it to them. And if we don't need to have a session, I'm all for it. We don't need to have one, a working session, that's fine. But I want the option of having all of them scheduled, and if we don't need it canceled, it's always been the first Thursday or the third Tuesday, for, I don't know how many years, boogers and booges.
The way it's always been, it can go get it done for me now, you know?
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, that's part of our job. And that, to me, is the important part, is to be available, and I know what they've got, I know they've got a job, but that's their job too. I mean, their central office, that's part of the working session, part of the, part of our monthly meetings, because Wesley made them that.
I think they're so efficient and so that...
Efficiency doesn't have it to do with me. Efficiency doesn't. I just look at... No, I'm saying the inefficiency part or efficiency part makes it part of the board meeting or the board working session. Just, I'm sorry, but I'm from old school. The more we have out there in public, the more informed Nelson County people will be able to even come back and ask me something, like Diane, what was on there? It's not that, I go to schools, this one goes to schools, it's just different. It's, you know, I want somebody to tell me something before somebody else, the paper or somebody else gets it, the whole thing with me.
Let me interject here, because I want to make sure that Mr. Dickerson, that Mr. Dickerson, who's been waiting patiently, also has a chance.
Very, very, thank you. Basic is a virtue, I hope. If it weren't for, since we are, I think what trumps all currently, since we are in this IGO status of transformation, it bodes well for us to, you know, whether it's the deep learning book or understanding, especially for me as a newbie, the 11 work sessions actually feels more attractive. And considering, you know, the consistency portion obviously has a lot of merit, I totally understand being efficient, and there's a possibility where not all members have to be there at every work session, if I'm, if we have a quorum or if we don't have a quorum, it's not like we're voting that evening if not everyone is there, or how does, how does that proceed or recorded if we have an absent, absent board member at a work session that's scheduled?
I mean, his, I think historically, and you got, I think you've got two parts to your question there, Mr. Dickerson, one of them being the quorum versus no quorum, and then the other part being the perception of that board member absence. Quorum versus no quorum, and I would defer possibly to Chip if I'm saying this wrong, but whether it is a voting meeting or not, to have the meeting, you still have to have a quorum, is that correct?
Right.
So, even if there were zero items being, having decisions made on, three or more members of a, the board would need to be present to hold the work session. The other part, the perception of, and I'll say it in a different term, I think what you're saying is, what would the perception be if I wasn't at a work session, or Ms. Berry, or yourself? I don't know that necessarily we have to worry about that perception so much, because we all have what I call life that happens. It's work, it's a vacation, it's a surgery, you know, we're sick one night. And I don't think that has as much of an impact as possibly what you would be concerned about, because I also know that whenever any person on this board has been absent from a work session or even a regular session, you know, Mr. Bradley has always been great, or previous superintendents have always been great about trying to catch that person up, of here's what was discussed. I know we've even done that for each other at times as well. So I would say, if you're worried about, should I feel guilty if I can't make it one? I wouldn't. If that's what you're thinking about there.
Well, myself, myself or others who happen to be busy, I mean, I think they're there for us to, or they wouldn't be there if we chose option B, I think it is for the 11, or is it A?
A.
We chose option A, they're there for the taking, to utilize and to grow with this transformation that we're cultivating right now. I mean, myself, that's the way I'm leaning, and, you know, if it, if worse comes to worse and I get hit by a bus and can't show up that evening, I, like you said, I don't think it's the end of the world. Because I will revive and come back again for the next month.
Well, sure, and I'll say it as, again, I'll use the phrase life. If life happens and you do get hit by the bus, God help us, please don't.
That was not ours.
There are more important things at that point than a board meeting. Not that this isn't important work, but that those types of life events, we have to also be conscious of them as people, as members of this board. Mr. Bradley, you've been patient too, I think you wanted to...
I did, I did. God, if you had edit, I mean, escape on this, and they didn't present it. I did edit the November 2019 item on the priority, so you got to see it, it says, discuss 2020 board schedule. So one thing I'd take pride in is learning, and that's something that I just, you know, we, this is a good conversation to have in a work session prior to, we didn't have a work session in December. In reality though, we should have, you know, had probably more discussion in November, so I'll take, I'll take credit for that.
You're fine there.
I don't need credit.
Last, 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 no, because last December, whenever, or actually November or December, whenever this decision was made, I forget which month, you weren't superintendent. We had an interim superintendent that pushed that recommendation, and for this calendar year then, which last year at this time, we were making the decision on the meeting calendar, it was just like, have one meeting in December. Normally we would have had first, first Thursday, and usually it's been the second Tuesday, because the way that the Tuesdays have fallen, it hasn't been the very next week being the second Tuesday.
But Jeff, just like you're doing, and I've done, and I think you've been on, Rebecca, you've been on it, it's, to me, that's legally, you are a member, I mean, legally, you can voice whatever, you can vote, you can do whatever you're doing today, because they made the law different now. I think it's, you know, as long as you're here in face, you count as being at your meeting.
And I'll go back, and you were saying, Ms. Di, about not having remembered a meeting ever be canceled, work session be canceled, and in 10 years, it's happened less than one hand, okay, that I can remember. Going back to, I mean, we've all also said we've got great folks in our district. I think that's something that we can also, you know, if we were to go the 11 route, which gives us the ability to have them without calling the special meetings as often, but if we were to go that route, then we as a member of five board members, Mr. Bradley as our superintendent, working with whomever will be chair next year, would be able to work ahead of time and say, listen, we do not need to have in another three weeks, or two weeks, or however long it may be, a work session, because we can already see that the agenda items are aligned. Mr. Bradley may say, based upon conversations with our staff and our staff meeting, we'd like to say, we can cancel that one, and we can take care of those items during the regular session, or we can move them to the next month. Whereas in reverse, it's a little bit harder again to add them back. It can be done, but it...
Well, you're stuck with one subject.
Yeah.
Whatever you say...
Whatever the agenda items are.
That's all you can talk about. And I think the best thing about this is the trade-off to start at 5:30 instead of 5:00. To me, would make it easier for you all, in my mind, anyway, to drive, you know, well, I know you're looking at me with that faint look in your face.
It's not about making it easier, I mean, for me, I signed up for it, I knew what I was signing up for.
I know, but I'm just...
And I'm happy to do it once a week if that's what adds the most value. I'm concerned with adding value and the most efficient and wisest use of my time and all the other people's time.
I see what you're saying.
And so, that was my point.
Well, I see what you're saying, but again, it's like you said, it's easier to take away than it is to have two, and that's my only thought.
Mr. Bradley?
Crucial, at this crucial juncture, you know, if we need anybody, if we need anyone to collaborate and to get together, I mean, it's all, if we deem it decisive, you know, this year, probably tone it down a bit, but I think if we're, we're in a, my perception is that we're in a very transitional period and a lot is at stake, and, you know, the more, the more time together is better in my opinion.
Mr. Bradley?
So, and I think the diversity of our board is a strength, and I appreciate all of your insights into this, and I'm going to really appreciate that you guys are coming from all different places. And this schedule is really, I think, something that we do need to probably look at as a more flexible thing, in that I do agree that we, so not only, not only am I a first year superintendent of Nelson County Schools, but our team is growing as well. So, what clarity looks like and how to provide that clarity for ourselves and for our community and for our board is really a top priority. With that said, I think it'll make us better as we look at this process. So, our next step as a team is to look at the schedule and really strategically outline how we want to set it next year. We've already done that, as you look at the priorities over there, but it's very broad. There's some items on there that, based on this year and last year, we feel like are become major talking points, so those have been outlined on there with the six work sessions and the 11 work sessions. I would say that we're probably, looking at it from my experiences over the past seven months, we're probably more aligned to an eight or a nine. It's probably of a healthier cycle from what I can discern, there are probably a couple months that we have them or we won't need them, and I can tell you that we'll probably be able to tell you that within the next couple of months. And I think we should, if we enter into the mindset that we can be more flexible with work sessions, I don't see why we, why we wouldn't do that. I think that's a healthy approach to take, and I would agree in that if canceling it seems to be better than calling a special called meeting, if we work, agree that canceling a meeting is appropriate at times, you know?
Let me, quick, two, two quick questions on dates here. When is spring break in April?
Second full week.
First full week.
It's the first full week, it's not that...
I'm just wanting to make sure, because April, April 4th is listed as a work session, I want to make sure that doesn't fall into spring break.
No.
And then the other one, as you're, you're using your phone there, would be the October of next school year fall break.
That is about right.
First through fifth is spring break this year.
So, so on option A, so as I'm listening here, of course, I've heard kind of, I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Dickerson and Ms. Berry, I've heard Mr. Bradley say that maybe the eight to nine is the better choice, and we'll find out that over the next two, three, four months. I heard Ms. Bradley say, you know, we can be much more thoughtful about canceling meetings. I would say though, that kind of lends me to think that I'm hearing a majority go towards option A, but I want to make sure that we have correct dates for work sessions involving the April and the October months because of breaks.
April, first through fifth.
So, that means then, if we look at option A's of the meeting days, April 4th would not be a good work session day. And while there's a little bit of a sidebar going on, let me...
We're still confused, I'm still confused, that spring break.
Because you're looking at this calendar.
Right. Yeah, we are looking at this calendar year for the April meeting days, and we need to be looking at next calendar year for the October, that, the school calendar year, I should say. The, and while, and while there's the sidebar double checking on some dates there, I think one thing that I've heard consistently across all of us is a 5:30 start time, that we'd like to try and start doing that.
I'm good on that.
Because one, that does give, especially for Ms. Breeding, Ms. Di, Mr. Dickerson, a little bit more of a lead time, and I recognize, that can be hard. In fact, today I was coming in hot into the parking lot from Lexington myself, so...
I hate you.
Something I'll throw out for us as discussion later on, and this is going to challenge to you, Mr. Bradley, for next calendar, not school year, but next calendar year, the 2019 calendar year. Somehow we do need to make sure we have the ability to be engaged with schools during the school day, and I know that this, the meeting schedule does not fit with that, but somehow we need to find ways, whether it's individuals or pairs, of course, we want one threes because of a quorum unless we call the special called meeting to say, hey, we're all going to have a special meeting at such and such school. The...
My battery's about dead, and switch over to another laptop.
Gotcha. But somehow, Mr. Bradley, I'd like you to look at ways that we can be a little bit more innovative for ourselves as individuals to be in school buildings during the instructional day, whenever we have those opportunities. Because I think it's important that we do see the work that's going on, staff are able to interact with us during the work, that we can interact with students. I mean, I enjoy talking to the students honestly more than I do to the tall people sometimes, because the students will really tell us how things are going. Ms. Sikolsky, do we maybe have?
Okay. Okay, so I, this is wrong, you were correct, so would you like to move the April work session to that second Thursday, is that what you were saying?
Typically, that's what we've done whenever the first Thursday of April fell within the spring break week. So, what does that mean? We would maybe need to look at doing for the regular meetings for April.
So, fourth, which, the fourth Tuesday would be the 23rd.
And how does that then match up with the first Thursday of the following month? Is it week back to back?
It is.
So, would we potentially, the 11th of April, what is, and the third Tuesday is still the 16th, so those would be weeks back to back? I mean, that's six and a half a dozen on the April if we were to go that route.
But there could always be a possibility of canceling.
True, so then maybe we do 11 work session, April 11 work session, leave April 16 Tuesday as regular meeting, and that could very well be, as you just said, one of those that possibly does get canceled, but we've got it available to us if we've got, as Mr. Dickerson said, a lot of work going on.
Yeah, and that's, and, okay, so if we do that, and we say, okay, we're going to plan on canceling, you know, I want plenty of time, I don't think this is a day before, you have plenty of time before we're going to cancel, because that's time that I can plan and work, you know, and do what I can do at work.
No, I agree with you 1,000% on that, and not just for us, we've also got to make sure it's for the staff, we've got to make sure it's for Mr. Brooks and Casey and the rest of the media, because they also have other opportunities to be covering other pieces within the communities. I would say that we would need to have the expectation on canceling a work session of a minimum of a week lead time, wouldn't you think, Mr.?
So, I got, I got one system we can implement that will allow us to run more smoothly, is from now on, we can just have a running agenda item to the schedule, and we, any changes to the schedule, we can have a running agenda item for our meetings that are set, the board meeting schedule on it, and it'll allow us time each meeting, at least to acknowledge any changes or proposed changes to it, so that we can say, there it is, so you'll have two weeks every time, so we can say, here's a proposal. two weeks every time, so we can say, here's a proposed change. Obviously, we wouldn't, we'd want to make sure everyone was aware of that, but that's something that, it just allows us to know that that's a possibility, so we include it in every agenda and allows us to acknowledge that.
Well, and especially for that regular meeting of each month, to ask, what about that next work session?
Right, exactly. And it's going to make us more intentional as well as a team here, while they don't look like they're exactly full of life right there.
They're thinking about parade and chili cook-offs.
That's what we're planning, we've got things to do after this.
So I think it's, I think it's safe to say that based on the discussion that we've had, the recommendation would change to, we didn't talk a lot about times, we didn't talk about 5:30 or 6:00, but the recommendation is, the recommendation would be 11 work sessions within a 5:30 start time.
Yeah, but let's make sure we got the dates correct. So it's April 11 work, April 16 left as regular. What about the October meetings? October break next fall.
And it's correct what's in here.
So then, it would still be Thursday, October 3rd as the work session, because that's not fall break week?
It's not.
Okay. So then, to be able to move on to a chili supper, so I'll make a recommendation, I'll make a motion that we choose option A, which is the 11 work sessions, it does have the one modification to the April work session date that Ms. McKay just mentioned, in that start times would be 5:30 PM on each of them. While this isn't part of the motion, we're going to hold Mr. Bradley to the thoughtfulness of an agenda item at each meeting.
Yeah.
And option A, and also that we, at a minimum, I say our expectation at a minimum is a week lead time, which if we do it at the regular meetings each month, it would be a two to three week lead time. So again, simplifies, option A would be my rec motion, 11 work, 12 regular, we got the one modification for the April date, so that's my motion. Is there a second? Was that a second, Mr. Dickerson?
It was.
Second by Mr. Dickerson? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I hear Ms., I hear Ms. Breeding, Ms. Berry, myself, was that you also, Mr. Dickerson? Okay, so I hear four ayes, any nays?
Miss Di.
Nays by Miss Di, motion passes. Good discussion, yeah. These are the most difficult ones to have, because we are trying to predict things a year out.
And next year, we'll do that in a work session in November.
There you go. Moving into item 7, putting people first, 7A, Community Care Addendum, Ms. McCoy?
Yeah, right now, we're currently in a service contract with three behavioral health services. And as we reimagine possible what we can do in our alternative school, Community Care and Nelson County Schools would like to partner together to intensify our services there, moving from just school-based services and therapy to more case management and group therapy that we can offer. We don't pay for these services, they're just, they're willing to increase their staffing and their appointments that they make for our students there. Because of the, we know that often there's trauma or adverse childhood experiences or world experiences that really our students there have had, they're very vulnerable and they need behavioral health support, so Community Care would like to partner with us to increase their services.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How many students does Community Care speak for us?
I don't have exact numbers, or I don't have one thing, I can get those for you.
Yeah, I'd sort of like to know.
Sure.
Is it, huh?
It's probably a lot.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, they see a lot of our students.
I know they do.
Two of our main providers see a lot of our students predominantly.
Those are two?
Astra and Community Care. The other one is out of E-Town JP Interventions, and they see a limited number of students in our district, just because they cannot provide the personnel to cover E-Town.
I'm sure they can. How, what is the average, I know I'm asking some questions here, but what is the average, how many times, I'm guessing, what's the average amount of visits does our, one of our students have?
So it's completely based on their, their support level of what their need is. And so typically, it's once a week or twice or about, or about a month is what we see most common, so.
That's right.
So, and that's why we're looking to increase, we're looking actually to increase the behavioral health services just three times a week over here at our alternative school. And so they're willing to do three times a week staff permanently there that can provide intervention, or individual interventions, but we want to run some groups, and we want to do some targeted case management, which involves the families as well. They just need more support than we currently give them, so we're opening our doors, or, you know, presenting it for you all to recruit.
So then I would need a motion to approve the addendum to the contractual service agreement between the school district and Community Care.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry?
Second.
Second by Ms. Breeding, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Fifth by Mr. Dickerson, any opposed? No, pass, thank you. Item number eight on the agenda, innovate and grow, 8A is the WHAS grant, Ms. Clark?
Well, very well. I hope you guys got to watch the video that was linked last week from Falsor Heights. So basically, this year, it was an easy answer on what we need to look for WHAS money for. So we, I'm asking you guys to approve that write a grant to get additional equipment and re, remake the possibility for Falsor Heights Playground to provide accessibility to all kids. Ideally, I would like to look at it over a long enough time for all of our county schools.
Absolutely.
So then...
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Mike. So I've got a motion by Ms. Di to approve the WHAS grant.
I'll second.
I saw the thumbs before I heard the second there. So Mr. Dickerson with a second on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Item 8B, deeper learning discussion. So Mr. Bradley, based upon we had a deep learning discussion on calendar events.
So we, you guys are about to go make history here in the next 25 minutes at the farmer's market.
Yes.
I think we will have to table this conversation till January.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Bradley. So item nine, student and stakeholder agreement, guest comments. Any person wishing to address the form, they do so by following these rules. Individuals representing the group are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up the microphones, state the name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. And I will need a motion to adjourn so we can judge some chili.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding?
Second.
Second by Ms. Di, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I saw the fifth thumb up there, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all.
Jim, join us, join us at the farmer's market.
Sorry?